Welcome to the Murray City Planning Commission meeting on January 5th at 6:30. Just a couple housekeeping things. This meeting can be viewed remotely. If you are viewing it remotely, you can submit comments via email to theplanningcommission@murray.utah.gov. To my left, we have Travis Nay and we have Ned Hacker. I'm Jake Pearson, the vice chair. We have Maren Patterson. And that's all of us. Oh, Michael Richards, I'm sorry. We also have Michael Richards. I expected you over there, I guess. So, those are the commissioners we have tonight. What else do I need to say? Oh, yeah. We have Susan Nixon and we have Zachary Smallwood. Do we still have Jared? We have Jared and we have Mustaf. I can't remember your last name. What is it? Algen Abbey. Okay. So, welcome staff. We are not going to do item number nine on your agenda today, which is the land use text amendment. So if you're here for that, we're going to push that to a future meeting, but other than that, we will follow the agenda as it is written. At some point, you'll have an opportunity to come up and do a public comment if you would like, which we will do at this podium over here. We would like those comments to be about three minutes long. And if you could state your name and address when you come up. When you're talking in that mic, sometimes it does not pick up your voice, but it is and the people at home can hear you, so. Anything else before I get going on our first agenda item? Okay, thanks. Okay, we have an approval of minutes from our November 17th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the November 17th, 2022 meeting minutes as written with the minor changes that were identified in the pre-meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Nay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Hacker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was approved. Conflicts of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Okay. We have no finding of facts tonight, so we will just move on to our agenda item number four, which is going to be presented by Susan Nixon.
Thank you. This application has been submitted from Young Electric Sign Company on behalf of BMW of Murray. Can you hear me? It's for a conditional use for an electronic message center sign. Those are allowed with Planning Commission approval. Electronic message centers are basically digital LED messages that can be changed and modified virtually with just snap of the fingers, basically. The property is located on the corner of State Street and 4600 South. It's 1.4 acres and it is currently in our commercial CD zone that does allow electronic message centers. The request is for an electronic to convert an existing pole sign that has been there for many years. The pole sign is a legal non-conforming sign, meaning it no longer is allowed. It doesn't conform to the current standards, but they can continue the same use forever, basically. There is also a section in our code that does allow for content change and we consider electronic message centers as a content change. So with a conditional use, they could potentially convert the pole sign to an EMC. The existing, the size of the sign currently is 215 square feet. They are going to, the EMC portion of it will be 210 feet. So the cabinet will have to remain the same size, but the actual EMC would be 210. The dimensions also would have to be the same as far as the height and the setback. They cannot change the sign in any way in order to maintain that legal non-conforming status. I'm going to go back to this other parcel here, excuse me, photo. The property is three separate parcels and as you can see on the screen here, the office building is on one and then the other two parcels are, contain the parking. Typically on a conditional use, we would require them to combine the three parcels, but in this case, one of the smallest parcel is under a different taxing district and so the county assessors will not allow us to combine them. So one of the conditions is they could combine the two larger parcels if the commission feels that's, would be a good thing for them or not, but they can't combine all three. There is a residential area within 240 feet of the EMC sign and when signs are located within a certain distance, they have to be regulated and basically turned off at night. So because of the close proximity to the residential neighborhood, the EMC sign would have to be turned off at 10:00 PM until 7:00 AM the next morning. And also there has to be a cer, it can't be over a certain foot candles. Can't be over a certain brightness. And, excuse me, that was 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I think I said 7:00. We did send out notices to all the surrounding residents. We did not get any public comment back. And the applicant and ESCO electrics representative have indicated that they will meet the six criteria for an EMC. And so based on that, the findings for the conditional use are that the proposed electronic message center sign is allowed in the CD zoning district subject to conditional use permit approval. And with conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use and property will comply with the standards of our land use code and the proposed sign is not contrary to the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan. So based on that, we have, staff is recommending the positive, the positive to approve the EMC as requested, subject to four conditions, potentially five, again depending on whether the council or commission feels it's necessary to combine all three. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. Is the applicant present? Yeah, could you please come up? Please state your name and address.
Ben Olson, 908 South 2000 West, Leighton, Utah.
Thanks, Ben. Have you read these conditions?
I have.
And will you be able to comply with them?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything else that you want to tell us about?
I don't have anything else for you guys, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions? No? Thank you. You can have a seat if you'd like. Any, we can now have a public comment section? So if anybody would like to come up to the podium, we'll open the public comment section and come up to the podium and say whatever you'd like. Seeing none. Zach, do we have any emails? Okay, I guess we will close the public comment section. And we can talk about it or we can have a motion?
I'll just say in my personal opinion, I don't really see much benefit at this point in time with the sign and change to add the condition number five.
Yeah, I agree. If they can't combine all of them, I don't, I don't think that it's, we need to add that condition to their approval.
I would agree.
Okay, well then, I would like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of an electronic message center sign at the property address 4615 South State Street, subject to the four conditions proposed.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Patterson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Richards. Can we, Susan, can we do a vote?
Just before I call for the vote, our apologies to BMW and ESCO for delaying them three meetings in a row. We're very sorry, but circumstances beyond our control.
Sorry.
So with that, okay, the vote, Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
And Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson, or, excuse me, Pearson?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations and we look forward to seeing your sign. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number five, Studio Fix 56. Susan will also present this for us.
Thank you. This is a, an amendment to a conditional use for the Studio 56 and the property is at 170 West on Winchester Street. It's in our RNB Residential Neighborhood Business District. The Planning Commission approved in addition to what was an older dance studio back in April of 2022. And at that time, well, it was conditional use and the Planning Commission reviewed it and approved it, subject to conditions. At that time, the property owner and applicant did not anticipate having to have a dumpster enclosure or a trash enclosure and so did not include that originally with the plans. Since then, they have decided that they need one. So in order to have that, they need to come back and amend their original conditional use. That sounds kind of, kind of interesting that you have to come back and amend a CUP for a dumpster, but our code specifies that any dumpster is not allowed within the front setback of the building, between the front property line and the front building, front of the building and unless Planning Commission grants approval for that. So for that reason, they need to come back for that. Then they were also wanting to apply for their building permit, which has this involved with it. So they'd have to get approval for that also. So the proposal currently where the dumpster is located, I can, you can see that as highlighted in red, outlined in red, is currently, there are two parking stalls that would be at that location. So they would be eliminating the two stalls. However, based on the number of stalls required for the use and the size of the building, they need a total of 21 stalls and they had 23, so minus the two, they will have 21, which is exactly what's required. The landscaping will not change. Basically, the layout of the site will not change other than the dumpster, the dumpster. And here are some, just some illustrations of what the dumpster would look like. And I, this is an elevation of the front of the building and the dumpster is on the left of it, but I also superimposed the dumpster in front of the building to show visually what it would look like, just to give you an idea. And that is, of course, this is subject to Planning Commission approval. There are architectural review is also required by the Planning Commission. So we did send out notices to property owners and did not receive any public comment. Therefore, we are, the findings for this proposal are that the proposed use for a dumpster enclosure is allowed in the RNB zoning district and with conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use and property will comply with the standards of our land use code. And the proposed use is in harmony with the goals and objectives of the Murray General Plan in this area. So based on that, we are recommending approval for the amendment to their CUP based on the four conditions outlined, which include they need to meet the original conditions of approval from April of 2022. And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Susan? I just had one question. The doors on the plan, they're opening not towards the front of the property, right?
They would open towards the front, I believe. No? Okay. What, the applicant?
Okay, that's what I, okay.
To the east. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Thanks, Susan. I appreciate it. Can the applicant please come up to the podium? Please state your name and address.
Amy Moore, 700 East, 5600 South Murray.
Thank you. Have you read these conditions?
Have.
And can you comply with them?
Yes.
Great. Do you have anything additional you want to present to the commission?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Amy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. I guess we'll now have the public comment period. So if you'd like to come up to the podium and say anything you'd like, you can. Looks like there's nobody here. Nothing remotely. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period. We can have a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve an amendment conditional use permit number 22046 to allow dumpster enclosure between the street and the front of the building line for Studio 56, address 170 West Winchester Street, subject to the conditions outlined here.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Hacker. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Nay. Susan.
Thank you. All right, for all, Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
And Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations on your dumpster.
Such exciting.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, Emanuel Collision Center and Zachary Smallwood will present to us.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you for taking the time this evening. This is a request from Emanuel Collision Center to add auto sales to their existing auto repair business. So they are located, I apologize, I don't have the addresses on these. I should, so I apologize. It's located, let me get my.
4642 South 160 West.
Thank you so much. And located here and it is a 4,000, about 4,400 square foot office warehouse building. It currently operates and has a business license for a auto repair shop and they would like to expand that business to include auto sales as well. They are in the MG zone. This is, the auto repair or auto sales is a conditional use in the MG zone. So a couple of things we're just going to review real quickly. The parking that's required. The parking standard is four spaces for every 1,000 square feet of office space and one space for every 750 square of warehouse space. So with that, the total ends up being six spaces. That includes three additional that are required by the state for display. So really, they only need to have three by city standards, but we include the six because the state requires it anyway. So, and then 10 are provided, located on those orange dots, if you can see them, including the handicap accessible space there as well. There is, this is along a private road and so we don't have landscaping standards required for properties that are along a private road. They do, this is their proposed floor plan. You can see the office. This is restroom, if you didn't get it, RR. Apologize. They do already have a paint booth. In the initial review, there was a concern from fire about the paint booth, but I talked to them afterwards and said it already exists and they were fine and said we were okay to amend their, their comment. So with that, I mean, that's, that's really it. So we are recommending that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit with, look, the address 4642 South 160 West, subject to the four conditions. Any questions for me at this point?
No questions for Zach. Thanks, Zach. Appreciate it. Is applicant present? Please come up to the podium. State your name and address.
Reyna Soto, 4642 South, 160 West, Murray.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Have you read these conditions?
Mm-hmm.
And will you be able to comply with them? Can you comply with the conditions?
Comply?
Can you, can you, can you follow them? Can you follow the conditions? Yes? Okay, thank you. Do you have anything that you would like to tell us?
Um, no.
Okay. Is there any questions for applicant? No? Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. Okay, we will now open the public comment period. So if you'd like to come up and to the podium, you may. There's none here, Zach. There's none remote. So we will close the public comment portion and have a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit to allow the auto sales business at the property address 4642 South 160 West, subject to the four conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Patterson. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Commissioner Hacker. Zach?
Awesome. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Perfect.
Perfect. So that passed, so congratulations. Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven. This is for Dogs Delight Mobile Grooming and Zachary is presenting this as well.
Yes, and this time I brought my staff report up, so now I know the address. So this is a request by Kevin and Stephanie O'Brien to operate a mobile dog grooming business at the address of 844 West Cherry Oak Circle, located here on a cul-de-sac. And it is in the R18 zone. It's a .26 acre piece of property in single family with a single family dwelling. So a couple of things to review. Their request is to allow three additional employees to come to the property. Our major home occupation code states that no more than one is allowed without Planning Commission approval. So typically with these major home occupations, the Planning Commission does not need to see every single one of them. We have these exceptions, I guess, that if you get neighborhood consent around the property for, you know, all your neighbors around you, that you can go ahead and apply for the business license. He did obtain all those signatures, but because of this request for the additional onsite employees, he has to come before this body here. As was mentioned in your packet, these employees, the applicant has stated that these employees only come to pick up supplies, turn in timesheets and pick up paychecks. They aren't actually doing any work onsite. So we don't have any real concerns there. We just need to have that reviewed by the Planning Commission and get that approved. So we are recommending, actually, let me go back and address one other thing. One of the issues that had come up in the past was that there were more than one vehicle onsite. And so we did, through working with our business licensing and code enforcement, they do now know that they can only have one vehicle and they are in the process of working towards getting a business license to have storage of vehicles on an off-site location. So in these conditions here, it does specifically state that there could only have one vehicle at the property, one work-related vehicle at the property at any given time. So with that, we are recommending the approval of the major home occupation to allow three additional onsite employees for the property address 844 West Cherry Oak Circle, as reviewed in the staff report. Any questions?
No questions. Thanks, Zach.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Is the applicant present? Do you please come up and state your name and address?
Hi, Kevin O'Brien, 844 West Cherry Oak Circle.
Thank you for being here. Have you read these seven conditions?
Yes.
And will be, will you be able to comply with them?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Do you have anything you'd like to present, tell the commission?
No, thanks.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for applicant?
How is dog grooming business?
How is it?
Yes.
It's, it's been busy. It's good. Yep. People like it. The mobile, they might like, like the mobile. Yeah.
Great. Love it.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. You can have a seat. Okay, we will now open the public comment period if anybody would like to come up to the podium. Seeing none here. There's a letter? Thank you.
I did receive an email yesterday. So it was after the time we typically email that, email those out to you guys. So this is from a Daniel Showell and Jill Johnson at 853 West Cherry Oak Circle. Let's see, Murray City Planning Commission, January 5th, 2023. Dear Serves, my wife and I live across Cherry Oak Drive to the south from the subject property. The wife and I have lived here approximately two years. During that time, we have experienced Dogs Delight Mobile Grooming employees come and going on a regular basis. We have never experienced more than two employees arriving around 8:00 AM and usually departing very quickly by 8:30. We are sure that three employees or more arriving would be a rarity. We are not impacted at all by Dogs Delight Mobile Grooming business and look forward to the O'Briens continuing to operate their business at their residence. Sincerely, Daniel Showell and Jill Johnson.
Thanks, Zach. Okay. Since there's, it looks like there's no other public comments, we're going to close the public comment section and then we can have a discussion or a motion.
I'd make the comment first. And that is, you've got the signatures from all your neighbors. You had a great letter of recommendation there, so you must have great relationships with your neighbors, which is outstanding to begin with. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion then that the Planning Commission approve the request for a major home occupation to allow three additional onsite employees for business from the residential property addressed at 844 West Cherry Oak Circle, as reviewed in the staff report and subject to the conditions outlined below.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Hacker. Zach?
All right. Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Yeah, thanks for coming. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda number eight, which is the Point at 53rd Office Condominiums and Zach will be presenting this as well.
You guys are flying through these tonight, I just have to say. It has not even been a half hour yet.
It was because of the excellent staff participation.
Oh, thanks. So yes, this is a request from the Howland Partners, Inc., Chris Johnson, that to, wow, let's start that again, preliminary subdivision review for a condo conversion project. This would be 16 condo units at the property 5217 South State Street. You can see here, if you guys remember back a couple of meetings ago, you approved the preliminary and final to create this lot here or this, this lot surrounding this building in the preparation for them to do these office condos. It's a .29 acre lot and their request is to subdivide, like I mentioned. For some reason, our GIS still doesn't have a color here, but this is in the CMU zone, which is the Centers Mixed Use Zone. It's a nice regal purple, if you can imagine. Purple color that should be going there. And adjacent to it is the County Ice Center, Murray Park, you know, Best Buy, all that fun stuff. So a couple of things we're going to review. Process, metering, parking and the existing structure review. So as I mentioned, it's located right here. That does have attached retail spaces and there are some office up here as well. And then to the north is the Barnes and Noble Building. So I'm going to quickly kind of go through each of the floors. The first floor is really the only different one. They are for retail spaces that are currently, I think all of them are filled actually. And those are going to be maintained as retail spaces. Second floor, second floor is four units, just kind of separated out there. Each floor does have its own restroom and they have access to elevators, all that fun stuff. This building was built, I believe, in like 2000, I think, 2000 or 2001. So it's a fairly new building. It's still, can't believe that's 20 years ago, but it's weird to me. So third floor, exactly the same. Fourth floor, exactly the same. So I'll get into the parking at this point. So the proposed and required parking, they are required to have a total of 92 spaces in their proposed CCNRs, which are the covenant, covenants, something and restrictions. I apologize. I fail. They do have it written in that they will have an agreement with the surrounding retail building to restrict those parking spaces so that they do have enough parking to include that there.
Um, they are proposing, um, the retail parking be out here in the front. Um, and then the office parking will be back where the, there is a, uh, structure located currently. So, uh, those will be written into the CCNRs on how much each unit gets, and, um, that will be reviewed at the final subdivision review. Let's see. So, um, here, I'll kind of talk about the existing structure review and the metering. So, uh, specifically, uh, the condo conversion code states that, um, every unit needs to be individually metered. Uh, when this condo conversion ordinance was written, it was mostly written for, um, residential conversions, I think. Um, so it, from apartments to individual condos. So that would make sense that it would be more metered. Where we're applying this in an office context, um, the, the water department doesn't allow for individual meters in, in these types of buildings, so there's a little conflict there. Um, a, and we, we just rather go with what their, that their standard is. Um, so that, that's what we'll be asking for. Um, when it comes to the, uh, Murray Powers, uh, separate metering, they are reviewing that at this point, trying to determine whether they want separate meters, uh, for each condo unit, or if they just want it all on a master meter. So, uh, that will be summed up, um, and, and more fleshed out after this preliminary review. Um, during final, we'll have that buttoned up. Uh, the existing structure review in that condo conversion ordinance, we require that there is a structural civil, um, and there's a couple of other, uh, reports that have to be submitted. Um, like I kind of mentioned in the, uh, staff meeting, it's close to two hundred and fifty pages or so of just reviewing every inch of the building and all the pipes in the building and everything, make sure it's up to snuff. That has to be reviewed by our building official, and he has to make a recommendation on any changes that need to be applied. So, um, we will be working through that, um, as this goes forward. And, uh, we'll have his final kind of recommendation when we get to the final subdivision approval, and hopefully everything will be addressed by then as well. So, yeah, that is really pretty much all I have regarding that at this point. Um, so we, uh, are recommending that the Planning Commission grant the preliminary condo subdivision, uh, at the, for the Point at Fifty-third Office Building Condo Conversion on the property located at fifty-two seventeen south State Street, subject to the nine conditions that are in your staff report and on your screen. Any questions? Okay.
No questions. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is applicant present? Could you please come up? State your name and address.
Hi, uh, Chris Johnson, one four seven seven three Bolden Falls Lane, Bluffdale.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Have you read these nine conditions?
I have.
And will you be able to comply with them?
We will.
Perfect. Do you have anything that you'd like to present or tell the commission?
Uh, no, I just appreciate you guys' review and, and efforts on this.
Okay. Does there any commissioners have any questions for applicant? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I guess now we'll open our public comment period, so if anybody would like to come up, they are welcome to. Seeing none here, and none that came in, we will go ahead and close the public comment period, and we can have a discussion about the application or entertain a motion.
I'll just say, I think there's a lot of questions actually out there on this. It, you know, this kind of looks really quick and easy, but a lot of those questions have to be answered by building officials, and, and we'll have a lot more to say probably when we come in for a final subdivision if this is approved, is a preliminary.
Thanks, Travis. I think it's also, um, important to note that we did have a discussion about this because we, we had an earlier meeting where we had to separate this property out, and so we've already asked some of those questions. Yeah, that's perfect.
Um, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission, uh, grant preliminary condo subdivision approval for the Point at Fifty-third Office Building Condo Conversion on the property located at fifty-two seventeen south State Street, subject to conditions one through nine.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Nay. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Commissioner Patterson. Zach.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Nay.
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
And Chair Pearson.
Yes.
Okay, um, we do not have, number nine, we're skipping. And do we have any other business that we need to?
Uh, just, um, a couple of things. We are planning on having a meeting on the nineteenth. Um, a couple of things are gonna be on it. Um, one I'm really excited about, uh, the Murray Armory is going to be doing a, well, Murray Parks and Rec is doing a renovation of the Armory. We can't talk about it.
Is the Armory what's next to the playground? Is that what the Armory is?
No, it, it's next to. Boys and Girls? Boys and Girls Club, yeah.
Oh.
It's really exciting. Um, I'm really excited to share with it. It's a good, it's a good historical building that we're renovating and having, um, some fun with it. So, um, Parks and Rec will be presenting, well, we'll be presenting that next week.
Zach, I haven't heard any updates about City Hall lately. Is there any, like?
Yeah, so.
How far out are we?
The last that I have heard is that it's, um, going to be spring.
So.
So soon. Yeah, we're getting real close. Um, I think, um, as I drove by on my way here, I sa, I saw some mill work, so they are doing some finishing touches. Um, I think what we're really waiting on is furniture. Um, so, yeah. We're, we're, we're excited to move. It'll be fun. These chairs are going, right? Of course. We're taking everything. We're gonna take all the paneling and put it in the new one. You know, great. So, um, and then also just keep you guys updated or, um, aware. Next time, you guys will be voting for a new chair and vice chair, so think of all your nominations that you want to nominate for that. Um, other than that, don't really have anything else.
Okay.
Oh wait, I do have one other thing. I'm sorry. Um, on Monday, uh, this upcoming Monday, January ninth, they, uh, the Utah League of Cities and Towns is having a, um, kind of a training type thing. It's called Your Land, Your Plan. Um, it's from, uh, nine to one on Monday. Um, it's being hosted by two of my favorite people in the planning realm. Um, and it, it's gonna be really great, um, information session. And also, if you decide to go, that'll get your training in for twenty-twenty-three, because you have four more hours that you have to do for this year. So, um, that will get in most of your hours if you end up going to that. It's free. Um, it, it'll be hosted at the new Zion's Bank Building in Midvale, um, their new office tech center. Um, I'm going. Yeah, and we'll have Susan send you the information.
In person only.
I, uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, we'll send you the info. So, yeah, it's pretty exciting. So it's gonna be really great.
Cool.
Okay, now I'm done.
Thanks, Zach. Any other questions for Zach? If not, we can have a motion to adjourn if someone wants to do it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, um, this Planning Commission meeting at seven oh nine. It just flipped.
Yeah.
That's fine. Maybe I got the hour wrong.
We're adjourned.
Yeah.